Hammond City Council, public hearing. Log call please.
Johnny Blunt.
Here.
Jason Hood.
Here.
Bobby Martin.
Here.
Lamar Marshall.
Here.
Mike Williams.
Here.
Okay, public hearing. An ordinance to amend the City of Hammond budget for the fiscal year 2013-2014 in accordance with the procedures set with in section 5-03 of the City of Hammond Charter. Mayor Foster.
Thank you, Mr. President. If you would, if you could go to item number one in your books, there is an outline there of the requested amendments. If you don't mind, I would like to ask Larry Francis if he would come up and explain why we need these amendments, or at least the majority of the amendments.
It is required by the Louisiana Budget Act that we amend the fund balances when there's a variance of 5 percent difference in what we budgeted in the actual. That's why we're here with this proposal that we amend the budget based on those figures. There's also one item that we would like to do is provide a transfer from the sales tax fund to the civil service expense account of about $50,000 in addition to this amendment. If you look at the first general fund, the general fund is what we asked for, the transfer from the sales tax fund, the $50,000 to the civil service expense account. The Fund 203 is the sales tax fund, and was showing that we actually had, we budgeted $860,000, we wound up with $1,091, which is more than 5 percent, so we are required to amend that budget. Fund 205, the court, we have a $50,000 excess, which is over the 5 percent, so we need to amend that budget for the ending balance as well. Fund 207, DDD, we have $84,000 more than what we budgeted, so we must amend that budget as well. Fund 209, fire mileage, they have $47,000, which is 5 percent more than what was actually budgeted in the beginning. Police mileage, police mileage is $18,000 more than what we budgeted, and that's more than 5 percent.
Larry, can I ask you one quick question?
Yes.
So if the beginning fund balance is the beginning fund balance, how does the beginning fund balance, how is the beginning fund balance off by more than 5 percent?
That's because when we budget, we budget for estimated expenditures and expense, revenue and expenditures. So since revenue and expenditures close out to the fund balance, the difference would increase if you got more revenue.
From the previous, all the way from the previous year?
Right, right.
So when we actually do the beginning fund balances as actual, an estimated beginning and not the actual beginning?
Well, it's actual based on best knowledge, but if more sales tax come in, and project this, well, right here we say we budgeted a certain amount, we got a million more, but the expenses offset that, so, you know, we have to budget and amend the budget.
Okay.
Okay. Fund 237 is the DMV fund, and we collected $22,000 more than what we anticipated. 610 is the water and sewer fund, we collected $291,000 more than we budgeted. Fund 710 is the general liability and workers comp fund, we're a little under about $8,000 on that fund. And the health care account, we have about $69,000 over in that account, will be our legitimate budget.
How was that last one so high so far?
Which one?
The last one? Health care one, sir?
Health care?
720, Fund 720.
$69,000? Well, a couple of things. We probably, our estimate might have been a little low, plus we did some things with immediate care that has provided a benefit to the city rather than having to have a lot of costs going to make after hours and that kind of stuff.
But all that is from the previous year because of this beginning fund balance, it wouldn't have, the things that happened throughout the course of the year wouldn't have affected that number. That's from the previous budget.
Right, but when you add the expenses and incomes for that year, if the income is more, well, you will exceed the balance because it closes out to that.
Right, but I understand, I understand.
Correct.
I understand.
Any questions for the audience? And now we're going to go into our regular session.
Johnny Blunt.
Here.
Jason Hood.
Here.
Bobby Martin.
Here.
Lamar Marshall.
Here.
Mike Williams.
Here.
Almighty Father, we address you this evening, and we come before you in Thanksgiving, and thank you very much for this community of ours in San Antonio, Louisiana. We thank you for those who have chosen to be leaders in the role of governing this city. We ask that you bless them, that you give them wisdom to make the right decisions, to make our city an even better, happier place for all of its residents. We ask that you give all of us here present a mind to see the needs of others, those less fortunate than ourselves. Give us willing hands to lift them up, a willing heart to feel compassion, and a mind to assist them in any way that we can. We thank you for the privilege of living in a great nation, a nation that is founded under your blessing and in the seats of your holy powers and your guidance. We thank you to those men and women who have gone before us and still defend our freedoms, both at home and abroad. We thank you for all these great things that you give us to this earth, for the potential of being great and above all, the chance to know salvation through your Son Jesus Christ.
Thank you. Our pledge of allegiance will be by Ms. Kyla McClendon, Hammond Junior High Magnet School.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with loyalty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Now you are in the record books of the City of Hammond forever. Thank you.
Mr. President, I want to ask Justin Cross, he works for Congressman Scalise, to come up, he has something he wants to present to the City of Hammond.
Thank you, Councilman. As I'm sure you all are aware, the Congressman is proud to represent First Congressional District, which is, also includes Hammond. The other day, he called me and said, "Did you know that Hammond is one for the eighth consecutive year the cleanest city in the state?" And I said, "Well, yes, I did, Mr. Congressman." Anyhow, the Congressman has asked me to come this evening to make a few remarks and present y'all with the flag. Says, "To the residents of Hammond, I would like to congratulate you, the mayor, his administration, and the city council on earning the distinction of Louisiana's cleanest city for the eighth consecutive year. One visit to the beautiful city of Hammond, and I can see why you have earned this title. The city has built a reputation for high standards of cleanliness, well-kept parks and residential areas. The streets and sidewalks always look pristine. This distinction reflects the great pride you, the residents of Hammond, take in your community." And then I have a certificate to accompany the flag, and it says, "The Flag of the United States of America." This is to certify that the accompanying flag was flown over the United States Capitol May 23, 2014, in recognition of the City of Hammond, Louisiana, for earning the distinction of Louisiana's cleanest city for the eighth consecutive year. So, from the Congressman to the City of Hammond, I would like to present to y'all this flag and this certificate.
We're the fifth consecutive year.
So, just stay in the chair.
Mr. President, do you want to go over that meeting? The trip?
Oh, there you go.
Okay. So, just to update the council, Mr. President, and the rest of the council and the mayor, we had the opportunity to represent the City of Hammond and, at the National After-School Network Council Conference. And I apologize for not being at the meeting last session, but I was in Washington, DC at the, at the national conference. And it was a very good, great experience. Now we have 49 states have adopted after-school initiatives nationwide. There's one, one state left to adopt. Louisiana is still making progress. And I had a chance to speak at a, at a national, there were some other speakers from across the country there. And the focus was primarily on how do we continue to build an after-school network citywide? And Hammond is being highlighted as the only small-sized city that is in the process of trying to develop an after-school network. So I had a chance to sit with some large donors, the Noyes Foundation, I sat at their table, as well as the Mott Foundation. So we had a chance to sit with some, some interested companies that are looking at Hammond or other smaller towns to see if they can, they can scale a product or program or network. And so we're being used as kind of the pilot right now for that to happen. So, the mayor has been 100 percent behind the initiative, and we just hope to continue to grow that and develop the network. We have been working with young audiences out of New Orleans. As a matter of fact, they will be in town tomorrow, we're meeting with Holy Ghost. Holy Ghost is looking at the network as well to become a part of the entire network. So we think it's going to be a good, a good opportunity for us to really grow after-school citywide in the City of Hammond. So I appreciate you for authorizing me to go. Thank you.
Any others? I just want to remind you that our budget-planned work session will be held at 9:30 on Friday, June 6, in the council chambers. And by the way, we want to, Lord God, thank Congressmen's police for that recognition of the City of Hammond, for that to know what we can do when we work as a team, as well as citizens of the community. Resolutions?
Mayor's report.
Or mayor's report?
Honestly, I was going to just let you ask me about it, because mine is very short. I do want to thank Congressman Scalise and to tell you that at 4 o'clock tomorrow afternoon, we will be accepting the Cleanest City flag here at Signal. So if anybody's available, even in the public, 4 o'clock tomorrow. The other thing that I wanted to point out, and I had sent this out previously to the council, sales tax collections for the month of April were $1,512,000, which was down just very slightly, but was still excellent. This will leave us with an amount over budget in excess of $1,000,000 for the fiscal year. We'll be able to use that in the coming 2014, 15 year. We'll talk about it Friday. Sit.
Sit. Thank you, Mayor. Okay, resolutions, none? All business? None? Are there any new business in the City of Hammond? None? Okay. We get approval minutes?
Two. Second.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams. Motion approved.
Okay. New business, number one, a resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into contract with the Hammond Daily Star on behalf of the City of Hammond, and to set as the official journal for the fiscal year July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2015. Ernest Peters. Thank you. And we come each year, and that we have to have an official journal for the City of Hammond, and the only official journal here is the Daily Star. So we bring it to the council for approval, for mayor to contract with them.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams. Motion approved.
Thank you, sir. Number two, a resolution confirming the reappointments of the following persons for a three-year term ending August 31, 2017, to the Hammond Area Economic Industry Development District. Sandy Summers, Alexis Ecorbier, Janet Davis, and Jennifer Bartel-Moore. Mayor Foster.
Mr. President, to the council, these people have served with distinction on, on the Heidi Board. Jennifer Bartel-Moore is actually a reappointment from a previous term that she served through 2011. She actually moved out of state to Texas, has come back, she's opened a small business, and I think she will be a great, not an addition, but great to have her back because she will now have small business experience in addition to the other background that she had. So I would ask the council to confirm these four appointments.
Second.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number three, a resolution, one, approving the submission of an application for $28,425 in Justice Assistance Grant, JAG funds, to purchase law enforcement equipment for the Hammond Police Department, and two, authorizing the mayor to sign all grant-related documents.
This is our annual federal JAG grant that we apply for. We have been allocated $28,425 this year. There is no match for this grant, and we are intending to purchase shotguns, full rain suits and gear, and some holsters for the police department.
Motion to approve.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you, Ms. Peters. Number four, a resolution to approve the contract with Personnel Management Incorporated, BMI, to report in the amount of $70,000 to provide civil service consulting services for the year June 1, 2014 through June 30, 2015.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Now, let me just say that it's no secret that we have some challenges in civil service. You've read some of the things that have been happening in the newspaper, they're an embarrassment to the city. I can tell you that the challenges that we've been having in civil service didn't start with this particular event. It's been going on quite a while. It's really embarrassing to the city that it seems like every time that we go to the Civil Service Board because of a disciplinary action, we lose, generally because we have failed to either dot an I or cross a T. So, actually, it was Chief John Thomas that brought me the idea of engaging with a consulting firm to be able to handle civil service issues for the city. And when I say handle, to help us develop new policies, procedures, and even checklists so that when there is an issue that comes up through the civil service system, we will have somebody very knowledgeable about civil service. Don't want to take anything away from our city attorney because he has just been absolutely phenomenal in helping us with some of the civil service issues. Chief Thomas did bring to me the possibility of hiring PMI resources, and we have met with them, and we have actually negotiated a 13-month contract. You'll notice that this is for a 13-month contract. Mark Wineski, whoops, is here. You have met Mark once before, he came and testified when we were talking about the Assistant Fire Chief. We've been very impressed with Mark's company and with the abilities that they've had. So when John brought me the idea of hiring them as a consultant for the fire department, I said, "If we're going to do it, let's do it all the way and include the police department in the consulting contract." So, I have, at this time, I would like to ask Mark if he could come up and introduce himself. So, again, you can put a face with the name and ask any questions that you might have of Mark. And he'll give you a little background on their, excuse me, what their company can do for the city as well.
Thank you. I am Mark Wineski with Personnel Management, I'm the CEO and President. We specialize not only in human resources, but we have a subset especially of the civil service compliance for both fire and police. We work with multiple departments, we work with other parishes in facilitation of those services. And our goal is to bring a subject matter expertise to that level so that we can coordinate services both with the human resource departments and all the departments here in the city, as well as specifically with the State Examiner's Office and any other legal matters that may occur. So we are on the ground in the, not only in the day-to-day operation of working with those departments, but we're also in a full audit and review, as well as a full recommendation back to both departments with standards and qualifications that would move that department to the highest level of compliance to the law.
How long have you all been specialized in the civil service?
Actually, we just completed our 25th year of business, June the 1st, so I'm excited about that. But approximately 11 years exclusively in the civil service matter, in addition to our 25 years of service.
It's pretty safe to say that a normal, because we have, I feel like we have a pretty good human resource department, I think we have excellent counsel. Pretty safe to say those sometimes are enough when it comes to civil service.
It's a higher threshold. Not only do you have the normal federal and state law that you have to apply with, you have your normal policy and procedures of both the city and those departments, but when you add the State Examiner's statutes on top of that, it actually creates a higher threshold that you have to coordinate those services with human resource and with legal to comply with all possible laws.
Mark, which one of those two departments gave you the most challenges that you're dealing with?
I'm sorry, say that again?
Which one of those, the fire or the police, which one gave you the greatest challenge?
That is a loaded question. I would say right now, we've done a lot of work with the police department, we have worked with Chief Thomas, pretty much in a pro bono basis to this point, to assist him in some matters. Our goal is to work with both departments equally as they need us, so we don't plan to show favoritism to one or the other. But our first item of business would be to come in and do a baseline audit. And from that baseline audit, we can come back with a formal level of recommendations that will be for both departments. And our goal in doing that is not only look at what you currently have, but you have policy and procedures that are written, you have policies and procedures that are by practice that may be different. And then you also have, you know, when you interview the members of both departments, what they would consider their wish list, and maybe the things that they need to look at to modify or to change. So, the first thing that we want to do is build a footprint of both departments and do a baseline audit. From that, I could come back and give you a much more formal recommendation of which department may require more work.
So then is it, is it fair to assume that you're going to be working with Loretta primarily?
Well, actually, I'll be working with the core administrations of both departments and Ms. Severin as well, as well as the administrator, deputy, and the mayor.
So you promised to lead the council, and I do.
I will do everything in my power to make sure that you are protected, yes, sir.
If I could point out one thing, excuse me, Mark, not to interrupt what you're saying, but from a budget perspective, both Chief Thomas and Chief Carker, Acting Chief Carker and I have reviewed the budget. This will, we have found areas in the budget to pay for this. So when you see the budget presentation on Friday, it will have no more money requests in it. That's one of the reasons this is a 13-month contract, is because we will be actually budgeting payments throughout the next fiscal year.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Motion to approve.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams. Motion approved.
Number five, a resolution to authorize the purchase of 34 Dell desktop computers for the police department for $34,170 from Dell Marketing, code number 67373474.
Yes, to the council, these are 34 desktops that will be going into the new air police station that is being now completed, and these are coming from Dell Marketing, which are on state contract, so therefore we are able to just purchase them at the 34,170 price as is stated.
So it's a really nice laptop, so a desktop's for a thousand bucks, huh?
It's supposed to be.
State contract's a grand for a computer, not like, state contract is around a thousand bucks for a desktop. I just thought that was kind of high, and that, you know, if it's a state contract, but typically desktops are in the $6, $700 range. I'm just surprised.
Well, that's true. I would think that, in that we're bringing them from Dell, and that we are looking at the, what they have a need of in that area, and through the recommendation of our IT department, that's why we're, they are pretty much trying to stay in conjunction with all the other computer.
Mr. Peters, I'm going to add here, these are much more powerful than your standard desktop. Clint's in the back listening to this, perhaps he can come out and expound on that, probably won't, but they are much more powerful than your standard desktop.
Bulletproof. Yeah, bulletproof.
Here's Clint, do you have any questions?
Out of curiosity, Clint, if you can just expound on why we're spending a thousand bucks on a desktop?
Well, before, we generally spent about 800 per desktop, but we upgraded the video capabilities of these with all the GIS stuff coming out. That's one of the walls we're hitting, is trying to run all this mapping and everything.
I was just curious, you know?
We upgraded them a bit from kind of baseline.
All right, thank you.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Can I ask my question, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Yes, to the mayor. So, so when we, I'm assuming we're replacing 34 computers too? Because are these existing?
Maybe Clint can answer that question.
I mean, I'm just curious, I'm just curious, when we have that.
I know that we are going to have some turnover. Ms. Peters, do you know if these are all new? These are to replace, what happens to the ones that are at the old police station?
Sorry, I didn't catch that question.
Because I know, like, we donate bikes and all, you know, that we find, so do we donate those to charity, or how does that work?
Okay, the question is, Clint, thank you very much for coming back. 34 computers, these will be far throughout the police department.
Yes, sir.
What happened, and I, we assume that they're to replace other computers.
Yes, sir.
How many are we replacing?
34.
So it is 34. What happens to the old computers?
Well, that's yet to be determined. We got to, you know, wipe them and everything, but could sell them to Gov. deals. Last time when we bought the Dells we have now, they just did a kind of an open charitable donation of the old computers, you know, schools, and anybody who wanted them could come.
After-school programs. After-school programs.
Now, the computers, we're getting rid of them because they're rather old, but.
How many do you need, councilman?
I don't know, I just.
Do you want us to reserve 10?
Yes, if you can, as always, we can always say no, but.
We can do that easily.
Trust me, I don't want them sitting in my office, so.
I'll let you know.
We do have, as you know, we do have storage problems.
Right, okay.
So, we'd be glad to.
(inaudible).
I'll let you know, Mr. Mayor, I'll follow up on that because.
If you would, please just let Clint and Sammy know, because they have all these.
I'll give a call, thank you.
Thanks, Ken.
Number one. A resolution to authorize the purchase of 45 300 Magnum Mobile Generator, MMG45Hk, with trailer, for $29,400 from Valentine Mechanical. Bid RFP 14-20. Nine bids received.
This was a need for a gear department for a mobile generator, and Janice and I brought it forth and gave us the information. We bid it out, we got nine bids back. And of course, the department decided that we utilized Valentine Mechanical because it met the specification that they required at the time we put the bid in. So, we bring it for authorization to purchase.
Motion to approve. Second.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number seven. A resolution to authorize the Mayor Foster to enter into contract on the heck of the City of Hammond with GALL, Inc., for uniforms for the fire police department, approximately close $40,000.
Police and fire uniforms, we've been purchasing them from, I've been here in the, over in St. Tammany Parish, and we put the bids out, and after we put bids out and got all the numbers back, we ended up going with GALL Incorporated, who will be supplying our uniforms for the police and the fire department. So, therefore, we bring it, and we on average spend about $40,000 a year now for replacement uniforms and for new officers that they come in. So, therefore, we bring it to this council based on the bid process and the numbers.
Do you know how many uniforms, did they get, like, two uniforms apiece, or?
Three.
And we replace them, how often?
I think they get three a year, am I right with that, Ken? I'm not certain. As, I would say new officers coming in are getting three and others as needed. But then there are, like I say, when we looked at the numbers from last year, we spent $40,000 on uniforms with Benson for fire and the police department together.
And we will save, how much per uniform, do you recall?
We're saving about $141 per uniform.
Per uniform?
Yeah. And that's, and when I say that, that is mainly in the fire department.
Percent, percent.
Percent, in the, in the fire department, because they do have their boots and stuff incorporated. And per the Director of Administration, the police department will probably be getting their uniform boots and stuff incorporated into their next year budget. So, therefore, we went with GALL, who is a major distributor, and then they met the requirements of the bid, and we placed and utilized the products that they're using right now.
So, when we say uniform, are we talking about like the dress, like if they in a parade or something, as well as when they address for a call?
We're talking about basically the call in uniforms. I think it will, because it's going to be a little bit more when we get into the dress attire for, what do you call it, when you all go to, I guess, when they are going to special meetings and such.
Well, actually, they have an honor guard.
Yeah.
The fire department has an honor guard. I don't think the police department has an honor guard.
Yeah, but that though will run just a little higher, but that's all in the bid process.
Make motion to approve.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Final adoption of arguments. New business, number one. Final adoption of an ordinance to amend the City of Hammond budget for the fiscal year 2013, 2014, in accordance with the procedures set with in Section 5-03 of the City of Hammond Charter.
Motion to approve.
Just one other question to that, Mr. Mayor, okay? So, does that mean now that the beginning balances for 14, 15 are going to also be, Larry? So, I mean, I know we're adjusting.
Wait, 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 no, I'm sorry, excuse me, Larry. Okay, your question was for the beginning balance of 2014, 15.
14, 15.
We will, and you were absolutely correct, we will use the estimated balance in each of those funds. However, since we are not on a cash basis, we're on a accrual basis, we will have expenses. We will, let's take.
That will still be flowing.
Let's take sales tax, for example. We will not know at June 30th what our sales tax numbers are because we, we're a month behind.
So, you want to adjust beginning balances now, you'll wait until that.
We will wait until, actually, after the audit.
Got you.
So, the accounting department uses the estimated, our best estimated numbers that we have.
For beginnings.
For the beginning balance, yes, sir.
Which is what creates the variance right now.
That you'll see Friday, or which is already, which has already been presented to you.
All right, so then.
And those are the estimates of the accounting department of what those numbers will be. Because you remember, some council members may remember that we try to do a budget, and I'm getting ahead of the budget process, but we tried to do a budget running forward, and every time we would try to present a number, then it changed. I know, Mr. President, Mr. Former President, you brought that up. So, we set March 31st as a absolute date. From there on, it's all estimates in the budget.
I got you.
Because you have to have, we had to have a beginning point.
Right, and that's good, because I just wanted, I didn't want to look for a change on the other side, too. So, I see that, so basically, now, for all intent purposes, that every year, you'll, depending on how we close out the year, you'll address this on an annual basis.
Absolutely. And probably the time to adjust that would be in January.
Right.
Larry, you'll be here.
Right, that's what I was thinking, too.
But in January, that adjustment should be done, because we will know at the end of December.
Right, how we do.
What the true ending balance of the previous year was, which would be the new beginning balance for this fiscal year.
Which gives you more capital.
You're absolutely correct.
All right, okay.
Okay. Old business, none.
Make motion to approve. Second.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Okay. Production of arguments, instead of public hearings, none.
Motion for adjournment? So, move. We are now.
Jason Hood.
Aye.